Alder person, as a reminder, if you could verify your presence here via your remote. You look like you're here. And while that process is proceeding, we'll move on to item number three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent prayer and invocation. I invite you to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Item number four on our agenda this evening is the administration of an oath of office for new firefighter Ashlyn Wagner. So we will invite Ashlyn up front. Yeah, we can do all four if you'd like them at the same time.
I state your name. Having been duly selected to serve as a firefighter.
To serve as a firefighter.
For the fire department of the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the fire department of the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to all. Item number five on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous regular council meeting on February 20th, 2018, attachment number one. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to accept and place on file.
Motion by Coath, is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight eyes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item seven, sorry, item six on our agenda this evening is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so on items appearing before us this evening on our agenda, in which they'll be invited to the podium after being yielded some time from an alderperson, which they'll be allowed to speak for no longer than five minutes. Item number seven on our agenda is my report. Good evening, council members, city staff, and those here watching from home. I'd like to share an update with all of you on items that I've played a role in this last month or might be of interest to the public. The mayor's youth council wrapped up their survey project for the Zoo Master Plan process with, I would say, tremendous results in which over 638 community members responded in just three weeks' time. Some members of the mayor's youth council, including Madeline Pets from the Community Development Office, presented the survey results along with the updated Zoo Master Plan to the Park and Rec Commission this last week. They also continue to work on their aquatics capital campaign, marketing, and fundraising, and planning for the next Kids to Park Day to occur in a date set in June. The beautification council met last week discussing updates to their 2018 project list. The hanging flower basket program does continue to move forward for the summer, which I understand there'll be 65 flower baskets in our downtown this year. They also have begun their annual tree sale. You can pick up, you can pick from a variety of trees for yourself or donate for the city to plant. Orders must be in by May 7th, and you can contact my office, in which you can get a flyer for more details or for the contact information for the person coordinating that project. As part of the annual Arbor Day in April, we're planning outreach to highlight the many efforts and technology associated with our city forestry program, where Public Works Director Joe Terry and I will be coordinating some activities along with that. Beautification Council is also participating in a spring clean neighborhood cleanup event with Current that will take place in mid-April. On the aquatic park development, we continue to field questions and offer information to various outlets and media sources to inform that the design process is nearly completed. In short, we will have shovel-ready plans in the coming weeks after the state completes its plan review to ensure compliance with state health and pool codes. We also remain in fundraising mode to achieve the $4 million necessary to break ground. If the goal is met this summer, a groundbreaking could occur yet this fall with an opener midsummer next year. On downtown developments, the RFP request for proposals on the East Town Plaza project is ready for finance and property committee consideration, hopefully at their next meeting. The interested developer on the Triangle remains engaged with property acquisition on the remaining non-city-owned property. The next step is to discuss site renderings, an updated site plan, and the financial proforma with the developer so we can continue to move that project forward. Last night, we held a planning commission in conjunction with the planning, with the city council, I guess, acknowledging an open house on the zoning code rewrite at the library. I know that we exceeded the consultants' expectations, and admittedly, myself and probably city staff's expectations with an exceptional turnout of community members to that to learn more about what changes are coming, as well as just an overall information about the zoning code rewrite project. So it was neat to see such a community turnout for our three-and-a-half-hour open house. Central Wisconsin Days is being held later this week in Madison, in which community members from our community, as well as other central Wisconsin communities, will be advocating for three priorities in Madison, one of which is a rural development fund to assist projects, community projects such as the Tribune Building in our own area. There's also an objective related to talent attraction recruitment, which the Midstate Technical College in our community and UWSP will be partnering to communicate their efforts as well as challenges we face in attracting and retaining talent and talented individuals and workers in our community. Since last month, I've held a number of community, or participated in a number of community events as part of Reed across America Day, where I know Chief Levens and I and maybe others were at various schools for that event. Hosted a breakfast last week with Project Search here in the first floor conference room at City Hall, where they also got a tour of the police department. The Public Power Rally was held, in which I participated with other Wisconsin public utilities, advocating for a number of congressional and legislative priorities which we have as a public power community ourselves. Monday morning, hosted 20 German exchange students and their counterparts here from Assumption High School here in the council chambers, where they learned a little bit about our government, issues that our city faces, as well as some of the community priorities and projects that we're working on. Attended Midstate National Egg Day last week, which was held in Wisconsin Rapids. We hosted the secretary of the Department of Agriculture here in the city to talk about the significance Midstate and the role they play, has, and the role that they play in educating and training our area workforce to prepare them for working in our businesses, as well as agricultural industries in our area. The mayor's Monday was posted yesterday on WSAU, in which I was there speaking, WSAU Radio, speaking about the Zoo Master Plan. You can find that on their website or on YouTube. Also participated, as well as some others, city staff participated in the Men in the Kitchen event to benefit the family center here in Wisconsin Rapids and the important work that they do to finance their operations. The grand opening of the Cultural Center was held a couple of weeks ago, just down the street here at the Johnson Hills Building, near us at City Hall, and I encourage others to check out the new home of the Cultural Center as they continue their fundraising efforts to build a new cultural center in our near downtown area. This morning, I visited Mariani with our Public Works Director Joe. They've officially moved into their expansion, and it's just a phenomenal sight to see what they've got planned and the work that they're going to be doing, not only with cranberries, but other fruits such as mangoes in the future. So it's pretty exciting, as well as the over 25 people that they've hired in their expansion process going forward. So we're excited of what's on the horizon for them, and look forward to their continued growth in our own community as they hire more people and make more investments in our town. So, thank you. Also, plug for my radio show tomorrow morning, I'll be on the radio with Carl Hillkey for my regular monthly visit at 10:00 a.m., so tune in if you're interested or catch it on replay on the various sources that that's available. Item number eight this evening is my appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards. It's attachment number two in your packets, and I will submit for your approval. The Parks and Rec Commission, Tom Echlin is appointed to a term expiring May 1st, 2019, and Heather Gigi being reappointed to the Industrial Development Commission on a term expiring April 30th, 2021. Council members, what are your wishes regarding those appointments? Motion by Raum, is there a second? Second by Furkey. Any discussion or request to speak on those appointments? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight eyes, zero nays.
Item number nine, new business, is that item A is a consideration of approval of soil-boring contract with soils and engineering services for soil services to be performed and verifying the wastewater treatment plant for its main construction. See the contract, attachment number three. Alder persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to approve the contract.
Motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Dolan. Any discussion on the contract? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight eyes, zero nays.
Item number 10 is unfinished business. Item A is a second reading of the ordinance amending certain sections of 11.14 of the municipal code regarding the temporary residential sale of agricultural products. See the ordinance, attachment number four in your packets. Alder persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance change.
The motion to approve by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Kellogg. We'll move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? First, alderperson Furkey.
Thank you. So in the past, I've made some points made as far as what are, what the petitioner was requesting of the city to sell produce on residential property, and I voiced my objection against it strictly on the premise of the safety. There are other issues, and just finished our zoning rewrite, you know, and now we're looking at changes. There's a lot of unforeseen challenges that may come with this approval. I see maybe where the mayor lives, or Alderman Kellogg, kind of a sleepy part of town. I see someone, maybe in November, when it gets dark at 4:30, 5 o'clock, maybe stringing some floodlights across his yard, starts playing some holiday music and setting up Christmas tree sales in his front yard. And I know this says produce, but it also says agriculture. And agriculture can be a lot of things. So before we open up this can of worms, I think it should really be thought through quite a bit more. I don't see any positives to this. I know the petitioner, bless his heart, looking to create a work ethic with his children and seeing blessings of revenue created by their efforts, even at a young age. I commend him for that. That's what I do with my children when they were younger. But again, there's a reason we sell product, whether it's agricultural product or other manufactured product, in commercial areas. So my opinion is this does not belong in a residential area.
Are there any other requests to speak? Alder person Coath, you're next.
When this issue first came before the council in December, I compared it to people selling Tupperware at their homes, Walkins, Mary Kay, or even having a garage sale. I do understand and respect the concerns of maybe things getting a little out of control, but I think a lot of people, hopefully, would exercise common sense on what they're doing based on where they live. I did go out and talk to the homeowner and took a look at his setup, and the pumpkins, he has them at least 15 feet away from the road. We have sidewalk on A Street that's closer to the road than what his pumpkins are, and it's a real simple setup. He just puts them in his lawn with a box, and you go and you put money in the box and you buy your pumpkins. But in the course of this, I had a citizen come up and talk to me from this town who is of Italian heritage, and the citizen was telling me the story of his grandfather. Said his grandfather come here from Italy with a couple sets of clothes and a few bucks in his pocket, and barely spoke any English. He got a job by borrowing a wheelbarrow, and he sold apples. And that's what he did. He made enough money that he was able to convince the shop owner to let him into his shop and sell apples on the corner of his shop. He made enough money doing that that he was able to buy the shop and go on to bigger and better things. And I think that's something that over the years has been lost, is the spirit of what American entrepreneurship is about, with being able to start with a little bit and build it into something. Now, Mr. Arnold said he does this with his kids. If his kids learn businessmanship in a scale of selling, maybe his kids can go on to establish something in this community that will be a part of this community for years to come. In this climate, in this day and age, we always talk that we want to see business come to our town. We want to see business grow. Granted, this isn't a major operation, but it is something that maybe somebody can gleam something of and hopefully build on it and maybe start a family business in our town.
Alder person Kellogg, you're next.
I guess I have two comments. One is more clarification, just so, because we read this three months ago. Now, if we vote yes, that means that selling of agricultural items will not be allowed, right?
It will be allowed, yeah.
Will be allowed. And so if we vote no, then agricultural products will not be sold in residential areas.
Correct.
Just so we know.
Yeah, thanks for.
How we're voting on. And second of all, I think with regard to selling pumpkins, and we can come up with unique cases, pumpkins to selling apples, or someone can go door-to-door with a wagon and apples, but the point is, is that we can't deal with individual cases. We have to come up with a code, and that code has to fit the city. And so are we going to deal with every case, one-on-one, as we do it? It seems to me we have a code. And there's places that we can sell agricultural items along A Street and other areas that it doesn't have, and other manners, that it has to be in front of homes and disrupt the neighborhood in some cases. So I guess I'm going to be voting no on this item.
Thank you. Are there further requests to speak? Alder person Raum, you're next.
Thank you, honor. A yes vote keeps his as it was?
No.
Changes it. The yes vote actually brings about the new.
The motion is to pass the ordinance or approve the ordinance. So if you, if you want to be able to sell produce at residential, on residential parcels, you would say yes, and if you don't, you would say no.
Is that clear? Alder person Raum.
So if I vote no, then it can.
You're opposed, you're opposed to allowing this to occur. A negative vote, a negative vote does not allow the sale.
Do you want to pass this ordinance or not? The ordinance is to allow agricultural products to be sold.
And the reason the motion was made in affirmative, irregardless of how the, alderperson Zerflu feels about it, we need to make a motion in an affirmative fashion, whether it goes up or down, so if that's confusing folks as well. Alder person Kubashak, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this particular situation, I'm actually glad that it was postponed until this month because I took the time and talked with the individual in question, or that brought forth this, and I heard a very different story. Obviously, there's three sides to a story, one side, the other side, and the truth. But it's interesting because I voted against it last time, and I voted against it in terms of safety because obviously I'd rather err on the side of caution, but after investigating, with the situation at hand where there wasn't any accidents, or there wasn't any close calls or anything else like that, I do believe that although it isn't government's job to create jobs or to create an environment of entrepreneurialism, I don't think that it's government's job to take that away either. So once again, like I said, I'm glad that I had the, we had the opportunity to postpone this, to do a little bit more research, and therefore now I'm changing my vote, and I'm going to vote in the affirmative on this. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, for clarification, an I vote would, an I vote would allow the ordinance to pass, which would then allow the sale of agricultural products Yeah, right. Yeah. So in case there's. Sue, do you want to clarify again, just for the sake of alders' confusion? I understand there was some question.
Right. Right. The motion on the floor is to pass this ordinance as written, and the ordinance would allow agricultural products to be sold in residential areas. So if you're in favor of the pumpkin man, vote yes. If you are concerned, vote no.
I will clarify, we're not voting on this in a case basis.
Yeah, we're not, right. We're not voting on him. It's to.
Be exactly serious about.
Right. It's to allow in every, at every house in the city.
Trees, pumpkins, berries, you name it. All right. I think we're ready for the vote. Please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Motion carried, six eyes, two nays.
Okay. Move on to item number 11, which is a report of the Planning Commission meeting held on February 19th. Planning Commission met February 19th, 4:00 p.m. February 19th, in the first floor conference room here at City Hall. List of members present included myself, Joe Terry, Lee Tao, and Fran Aaron. Absent were Shane Burkhart and alderperson Todd Furkey. Others present are on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 p.m. Item one was an update on the zoning ordinance rewrite project with the consultant Civitech. Tim Schweki and Charlie Handy from Civitech presented a recap of the January Committee of the whole meeting, changes in the definition, the uses of conditional use, and special exemptions as it pertains to the land use matrix under 2017 Act 67, and reviewed the review authority matrix. No action was taken. Fran Aaron was excused from the meeting at 5:07 p.m. Item two was an update on the planning, comprehensive plan update with the consultant Civitech. Tim Schweki and Charlie Handy provided an update on the proposed future land use map draft. Item three was a discuss, a discussion on the potential adoption process for the new zoning code, zoning map, and comprehensive plan update. Tim Schweki and Charlie Handy presented the next steps in the process, which will include the public open house, public hearing, and recommendation from the Planning Commission and council action. The public open house is tentatively scheduled for Monday, March 19th, from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. Item four was an adjournment, a motion and a second to adjourn, and that motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:25 p.m. Let's see. That's item, item 11. Council members, what are your wishes regarding item 11?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dolan, is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications, discussion related to that report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight eyes, zero nays.
Item 12 is a report of the Planning Commission meeting held on March 5th. Planning Commission met at 4:00 p.m. on March 5th in the first floor conference room here at City Hall. Members present included myself, Shane Burkhart, Fran Aaron, Lee Tao, and Joe Terry. Absent were Sue Wesley and alderperson Furkey. Others present were alderperson Tom Raum and those on the attached list on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 p.m. The approval of the reports in the January 8th, January 15th, and February 19th Planning Commissions, Planning Commission meetings. There was a motion by Tao, second by Aaron, to approve the reports from those meetings, and that motion carried unanimously. Item two, no maps or plots received. Item three was a public hearing on Plan 180094 Storage Unlimited LLC. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow for the construction of self-storage units within the B2 General Commercial District. Subject property is located at 2710 West Grand Avenue, parcel 340125, 275. Public hearing was called to order at 4:01 p.m. Speaking in favor was Jamie White, owner described the prop, who described the project. Two buildings are planned to be built within the next two to four years and the rest over the next five to 10 years, and there was no one speaking in opposition. Public hearing closed at 4:03 p.m. Item four, action on Plan 180094 Storage Unlimited LLC, conditional use within the B2 General Commercial District to allow the self-storage units. There was a motion by Aaron, second by Burkhart, to approve the Plan 180094 Storage Unlimited Unit LLC within the B2 General Commercial District, conditional use to allow self-storage units within the six conditions recommended by staff in their attached. That motion carried unanimously. Item five was a public hearing on Plan 180106 Pause and Claws. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow for a commercial kennel with accessory uses within the B2 General Commercial District. That subject property is located at 1921 Baker Street, and the public hearing was called to order at 4:07 p.m. Speaking in favor was Mike Petrowski, the business owner, who described the intent of the project and how he intends to operate the business, speaking against, there was no one speaking against, and the public hearing closed at 4:16 p.m. Action on Plan 180106 Pause and Claws, conditional use within the B2 General Commercial District to allow a commercial kennel. There was a motion by Aaron, second by Burkhart, to approve Plan 18106 Pause and Claws, conditional use within the B2 General Commercial District to allow a commercial kennel within the nine conditions, with the nine conditions recommended by staff, and that's attached, and that motion. with the nine conditions recommended by staff in that's attached. And that motion carried unanimously. Item seven was adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn, and motion carried. Meeting adjourned at 4:21 PM. Council members, what are your wishes regarding the report of item number 12?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Furkey. And I see both the applicant, both individuals are in the audience with those items on the Planning Commission. If there are questions, Alder Persons, if you didn't recognize them from the meeting. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 13, item A, or item 13 Standing Council Committee reports. Item A is a report of the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on March 13th. Alder Persons, Zerflu, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Property Committee met on Tuesday, March 13th at 5:00 PM in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. A list of others on present is on file in the Clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two, consider approval of a request from the Mead Witter Foundation for permission to proceed with repairs to the Memorial Clock and Bell Tower. There was a motion and a second to approve a request from the Mead Witter Foundation for permission to proceed with repairs to the Memorial Clock and Bell Tower. The repairs include the following payments to be paid by the Mead Witter Foundation. $128 to Rapid Quality Lawn and Lawn Scaping, $6,770.22 to Vanard Electric Company, $514 to Shopmaster LLC, $629.72 to N. Glance &amp; Son, and $245.28 to Guelzo Heating and Air Conditioning LLC. That motion carried unanimously. Item number three, consider for approval a recommendation from Statewide Services to deny a claim from Karina Krajewski for damages to residents located at 910 Seventeenth Street South due to a sewer backup. There was a motion and a second to approve the recommendation from Statewide Services to deny this claim for damages to the residents at 910 Seventeenth Street South due to a sewer backup. That motion carried unanimously. Item number four, consider for approval a recommendation from Statewide Services to deny a claim from Laura Knudsen for the cost of cleaning her vehicle due to paint overspray. There was a motion and a second to approve the recommendation from Statewide Services to deny this claim for the cost of cleaning the vehicle due to paint overspray. That motion carried unanimously. Item number five, consider approval of a request to purchase two zero-turn mowers and trailer. There was a motion and a second to purchase two Skag Turf Tiger II lawn mowers from Thorpe Electric Motor Service for $30,240, and a trailer from Rouge Companies for $3,673. That motion carried unanimously. Item number six, consider approval of a request to purchase a 16-foot mower. There was a motion and a second to purchase a Jacobson HR800 16-foot four-wheel-drive mower from Horse Distributing for $79,997. That motion carried unanimously. Item number seven, review and consider approval of the temporary limited easement for parcel 16 McMillan Memorial Library. There was a motion and a second to approve the temporary limited easement for parcel 16 McMillan Memorial Library. That motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, review and consider approval of the gas distribution easement for Centralia Center Parking Lot. There was a motion and a second to approve the gas distribution easement for Centralia Center Parking Lot. That motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, review and consider award for the base bid for Phase One of the East Riverbank Project to the low-qualified bidder. There was a motion and a second to award the base bid for Phase One of the East Riverbank Project to Yankee General Contractors in the amount of $2,688,631.75, with the selection of reductions of alternate items as presented. The project is being funded in part by the DNR Stewardship Grant. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 10, review and consider approval of Amendment Number One to modify the Engineering Consulting Services Contract with MSA Professional Services for additional design work related to the recreational complex at Witter Field, limiting the amount to $175,000. There was a motion and a second to approve Amendment Number One, under the condition that the scope identified will be $175,000. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 11, review and consider approval of a contract with Quest Civil Engineers to complete a wetland delineation at the Rapids East Commerce Center. There was a motion and a second to approve a contract with Quest Civil Engineers in the amount of $3,616.32 to complete a wetland delineation at the Rapids East Commerce Center. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 12, consider for approval Resolution Number 11, amending the 2017 budget. There was a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 11, amending the 2017 budget. Motion carried unanimously. See Resolution Number 11 attached to this report. Item number 13, consider approval of a Class B liquor license and Class B beer license, application submitted by Door 212 LLC Doing Business as Door 212 for the premises located at 212 West Grand Avenue. There was a motion and a second to approve the Class B liquor license and Class B beer license application submitted by Door 212 LLC Doing Business as Door 212 for the premises located at 212 West Grand Avenue. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 14, beverage operator license applications. There was a motion and a second to approve the beverage operator license applications, and these are on file with the Clerk's office. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 15, audit of the bills. There was a motion and a second to approve checks 70982 through 71320, and manual checks 99617 through 99634. Motion carried unanimously. Item number 16, set the next meeting date. The next regular meeting of the Finance Property Committee will be on Monday, April 9th, at 5:00 PM. Item number 17 was adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. That motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 5:45 PM. And I'll move for adoption of the report.
Motion to approve by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Coth. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Kubashak, you're first.
I would like to request items nine and 10 be held out for a separate vote.
Alder Person Rayom, you're next. Anything further, Alder Person Rayom? Anything further besides, okay. Are there other requests to speak? Motion is to approve the report, with the exception of item number nine, items number nine and 10. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
That leaves us with the balance of the report. Alder Person Rayom, I'm going to go to you first because you said you wish to speak to, unless Alder Person Kubashak wanted to speak to is holding them out, okay? One of you guys, please go. Thank you.
I'll go first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, with this, it doesn't say it in the minutes, and I don't know if anybody else. I attended the meeting. We're $400,000 over budget on this particular project. And I understand that we're taking $300,000 out of the contingency fund, or the general fund balance, and $100,000 out of the Public Works Construction Fund. But it, it's a case where I approved this project during the budget process, at the budgeted amount. I understand that there's cost overruns and other things. But last time I checked, we don't have a money tree growing out front. And where is all this, where is all this money coming from? I never thought in a million years that I'd be the most fiscally responsible or fiscally conservative member of anybody, let alone this body. But it's just a case where $400,000, we could spend that on a lot of things. We've got roads that definitely need repairing. We've got a sewer system that's at, at an age where it's starting to fall apart. And we've seen that with the, the West Side Lift Station. I mean, I just, I understand that there are matching funds from the state of Wisconsin, DNR Stewardship Fund, but $400,000 is $400,000. And I, I can't. I voted for the project through the budget at the budgeted amount. Therefore, I, I can't approve the project with it having such an overrun. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Person Rayom. You're next. And then others, if there's a speaking order up there.
Without adding too much to it, I agree with, with what Thad was saying. That was the item I wanted, I guess, mostly speak on. For some of the, I guess, same reasons that the amount has gotten quite high there in that, on that project without the money.
Thank you. Their floor is open for a motion. On items nine or 10. Alder Persons Zerflu, you're first.
I just had a question. Item number nine was withheld, but 12 wasn't. I just wondered, does that cause a conflict? I thought 12 was the actual resolution.
I, I would agree. And I guess I don't have, you know, the, the budget, the budget, well, we haven't awarded the bid, right? So technically, the award of the contract, so at this point, you could, you could reject the contract with the, and then decline all bids, I think would be the recourse legally, because we have to decline all bids on the project, then rebid it should, you know, that, that action happen. So, so technically, the budget amendment, it was, the monies were moved, but the, the contract has not been awarded. Would that be a way to, to clarify the question? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Do you have anything further, Alder Persons Zerflu? Okay. Alder Person Dolan, you're next.
So we obviously passed this through our committee, but I, I do want to emphasize again, and I know probably not that many people were watching that meeting, but this is scope, what I'm talking about, item 10, that's scope creep, you know, 175,000, because we either missed something or something that, I recognize there's scope creep in projects. I've done enough of them myself. I don't think this is overly a lot of scope creep, you know, for the $12 million project. But I would really urge, because I only got one more opportunity at this, so I would really urge everybody to take a look at that city staff. And we can't keep adding as Alder Person Kubashak, and Alder Person Rayom, and everybody else just mentioned, because we got to get this going. And, you know, we can't keep creeping, creeping, creeping because we've missed things. And that's on MSA as well, not just us.
Well, I think the alternative, and maybe Joe wants to speak to it, would be to, to decline it. And MSA has to, to come back with, I mean, some of the work's already been rendered, right, from a design standpoint. So I think there's that dynamic. But I don't know, Joe, did you have anything else to add on, on either of those items, based on the comments?
Sure. A couple of comments on both items. The, the Riverfront Project is a, you know, a project that's been in the works for several years. The, you know, the scope of that project was defined, you know, almost two years ago. The grant, the city spent a significant amount of funds applying for the stewardship grant. The grant was received. The city council approved receiving the grant and agreed to construct a project within the scope. During the design phase, you know, staff had seen that the engineering estimates throughout the design were starting to increase costs. And so portions of the project were deleted in order to best fit the most essential parts of the project and maintain those. So the, the riverbank stabilization, the, you know, the trail along the river, there's a number of things that go along with that that are essential to keep it safe. This project's been whittled down, and, you know, the, the bids that came in were certainly above what was anticipated. We did have several alternate items in the project, a restroom facility, park lighting, things like that. Those have been removed. And the remainder of the project is really meat and, meat and potatoes. There's very little, you know, amenities to make it special. And that was the goal of the project and the work that the city, you as Alder Persons, and staff has been doing for the last several years. The, our Finance Director and staff and the mayor have worked to evaluate. And, you know, some of the savings that we saw in some of our Public Works Construction projects and some other reserves helped make up the balance to make this project move forward. It would be a substantial effort at this time. I mean, we have the funding available to do this project. It is different than what was budgeted. To, to deny a bid on a project as specialized as this would send a poor message to contractors to want to bid a project like this. They spend an enormous amount of money bidding in good faith. And, you know, it leaves the city backpedaling, trying to figure out, okay, what, what now is the new scope of this project? As a result, because we do have funds available, I would highly recommend that the council consider approving the, the contract and, and moving this project to fruition. Again, it's been, what, 10 or 15 years in the planning, several years in the actual design, and, and the project's ready to execute. As it pertains to the MSA contract, if you take a look at a page later on in your document, it has an analysis of the overages due to scope creep. Their request for the addendum was $194,000. Met with MSA, expressed concern about the potential for scope creep, or, or what had happened there. But I think it's also important to take a look at what those proposed costs cover. It's not all for the design work that has already been done. A significant amount of that is for work that is yet to do. And that is construction oversight, bidding work, those types of things. The project has grown. We've looked at it, that project, our aquatics project, as a master planning an entire facility. And their services are being paid for on a time and materials basis, not to exceed. There are several components of the project, such as the park amenities, that are not likely to be constructed because of funding. Those services won't be paid for. So I, I had met with MSA and negotiated their original request of 194,000 down to the amount that's shown as 175,000. Essentially, what that results in, there's $68,000 for construction administration. That's for work that has not yet happened. But that would be required to oversee a, a project of this scope in its entirety. So that's not money that's out of pocket for the city at this point. That's not, the result is due to some scope creep. But those funds will only be spent if those services are provided. Bidding an extra $2,000, just because of the, the project being a slightly larger project. $124,000 in construction contract and construction documentation. Because of our negotiation, that has changed from 124,000 to 19,000. That's the message that we don't accept unannounced scope creep, those types of things. There are things that we have specifically asked for, some of our 3D modeling, some of the rendering, things like that, that were not included in the original design of the project, or the original contract. And MSA has provided those, and I'm sure you've all seen the, the video, and it's been a important part of telling the story of what it looks like. So as a result, reducing that cost from 124,000 to 19,000, I'm comfortable recommending this. Again, it's $19,000 due to scope creep. There's an understanding that it, that we all need to be held accountable and, and avoid that type of activity. The rest of it is for work that has not occurred yet. So again, for the MSA amendment, I would recommend approving that as well. Thank you. So again, for the MSA amendment, I would recommend approving that as well. Thank you.
Alder Person Dolan, you're first.
So Joe, thanks, Joe. He actually said it better than I could. I'm not against this either, but I just want, you know, not everybody goes to our meansless face, not everybody watches them. I just wanted to explain that there is this type of stuff in these projects, especially a $12 million plus. So when we can make a motion, I'm more than happy to make it.
Certainly, the floor is open.
I make a motion that we approve items nine and 10 in the agenda for the Finance Property Committee meeting.
A motion by Dolan to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Furkey. All right, move into any further discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Rayom, you're first.
Well, I would have rather, I wanted to vote no on nine, yes on 10, but I can't, I can't do that, because they're both put together here, so. Is there any way we can back up and split them?
You can go into, make a motion to amend the motion, right? That's, or, yeah, if there's any unanimous consent to split the two items. So Tom, would you like to?
I would make, if, if the motioneer and the seconder would agree, make a motion to split the two items into separate votes.
Right. So the request has been made to the first and the second, and so I will call for unanimous consent. Is there any opposition to splitting the items? We've got opposition to splitting the items, so the alternative would be, Tom, to make a motion, right, I guess we already cast unanimous consent, or the unanimous consent failed, so at that point, I defer to our attorney here to clarify.
Right. There's a motion and a second, and you informally requested amendment of the motion. It's for the body to decide whether they want to amend the motion. It's not for the individual people who made the motion, so the body does not wish to amend. So we're going to proceed with the motion as it is on the floor.
With that, are there any further requests to speak? Or, Tom, did you have anything else for your question? Okay. We'll move into a vote. Motion is to approve items nine and 10 from the report.
Motion carried, five ayes, three nays.
Move on to item number, letter B under 13, the Public Works Committee meeting held on March 6th. Alder Person Rayom, the floor is yours.
There we go. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 6th, 2018, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present, also attended with Joe Terry and Nick Dooms. Item number one, review the DPW report. The report was reviewed and is available for viewing on the web, city website, www.wi-rapids.org. Item two, review and consider approval of the relocation order and right-of-way plat for High Street. Is moved and seconded to approve the relocation order and right-of-way plat for High Street. The motion carried unanimously. Item three, review and consider approval of proposals for sanitary sewer lining work needed for the eight-inch sanitary sewer on High Street between Seventh Avenue North and Eighth Avenue North. Is moved and seconded to accept the lowest responsible bid for sanitary sewer lining work needed for the eighth, eight-inch sanitary sewer on High Street between Seventh Avenue North and Eighth Avenue North. The motion carried unanimously. See the low bid attached to this report. Item four, review the request for proposal scope for space needs analyst and master plan for the city garage. It was moved and seconded to approve the request for proposals to scope for space needs and analysis and master plan for the city garage. The motion carried unanimously. Item five, review the referral list. Items numbers seven, eight, and nine were removed from the list. Item six was adjourned, there is motion and second to adjourn. The motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 6:25 PM, and with that, your honor, move for adoption of the report.
Motion to approve by Rayom and a second by Coth. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 13C, a report of the Human Resources Committee meeting held on March 6th. Alder Person Furkey, floor is yours.
Thank you, your honor. The Human Resources Committee met March 6th at 4:00 PM. It was called to order by Alder Person Chairman Todd Furkey at 4:02. Item number two was to review a Tier 11 Fire Department program. Interim Fire Chief Young gave an update on Tier 11. Chief Young was directed to present another review of the tier in August of 2018 and again in 2000, in February of 2019. Item number three, considering hiring of a part-time seasonal position to assist with airport management duties. This position will be funded as part of, as part of the airport management contract the city has with the Southwood County Airport Commission. Airport manager Jeremy Sickler explained the request. A motion by Furkey and a second by Kellogg to approve a job description and hire a part-time seasonal airport position for 2018 only. The position would be for 25 weeks, not to exceed 500 hours, and the rate of pay would be $10 per hour. This position will be funded as part of the airport management contract the city has with Southwood County Airport Commission. That motion carried. See the attached job description. Item number four, discussion around payroll and human resources information system. Don Urban and Tim DeSorci updated the committee on a new finance and human resource software. Item number five was review and approve remote work policy. A motion by Kellogg and a second by Kubusak to approve the remote work policy. That motion carried. See attached remote work policy. Item number six, review and approve revised flexibility in work schedule policy. A motion by Kellogg and a second by Furkey to approve the flexibility in work schedule policy. That motion carried. See attached flexibility in work schedule policy. Item number seven, review and approve workplace harassment and workplace expectation policies. A motion by Kubusak and a second by Furkey to approve the workplace harassment policy and the workplace expectations policy with the inclusion of elected officials to the workplace expectations policy. That motion carried. See the attached workplace harassment policy and the workplace expectations policy. Item number eight was adjournment. There was a motion by Furkey and a second by Kubusak to adjourn. That motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:24 PM. And with that, I would offer the Human Resources Committee March meeting for approval.
We have a motion by Furkey. Is there a second? Second by Zerflu to approve the report. Any requests to speak? Alder Person Rayom, you're first.
Thank you, your honor. And I wish, I guess, I had thought of it and asked sooner, but, so I went to ask it now. Item number three, and I approve with what, with what the action that was as far as a part-time seasonal position at the airport, but could somebody explain the funding of, where the actual money is coming from, that it has the, you know, the airport management contract that the city has with the Southwood County Airport Commission? Who, whose money all is that?
So the city agrees to fund a percentage of the airport's budget annually.
Is it just the city's, though? I guess that's my question.
Oh, it's coming out of the airport's budget, so 100% out of the budget that was already approved.
That's the question I had, because I, as I'd read that over and over, I, as I, it looked like just the city might be funding it.
No.
And I saw, I saw it said the Airport Commission, but it looked like the city.
The city's providing the contract services, but they're being reimbursed by the Airport Commission, which the city pays a portion of the budget.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any further requests to speak? See no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Move on to item number 14, miscellaneous reports. Item one, Southwood County Airport Commission meeting held on February 1st. Item two, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department monthly update for February. Item three, the Park and Recreation Commission meeting held on March 14th. Item four, McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees meeting held on January 17th and February 21st. Item five, Housing Authority meetings held on December 27th and January 31st. Item six, the Housing Authority Resident Advisory Board meeting held on February 6th. Item seven, the Wastewater Treatment Commission meeting held on January 9th, and item eight, the Water Works and Lighting Commission meetings held on February 21st. Alder Person, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Make motion to approve all and place on file.
Motion by Furkey. Is there a second? Second by Coth. Any discussion? See no requests to speak. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 15 is referral of communications to committees. There's nothing listed. Is there any referral of communication to committees? Alder Person Furkey, you're first.
So in the past, I think there's probably been a lot of referrals, at least I think there's been some that I've made, that, once they're made, they don't seem to take up any space somewhere. So I would like to see the, possibly, I guess it would be the city clerk's duties to note these referrals, similar to what Public Works does, and give the petitioner some updates as far as what's happening with this referral, and whether it's directly or if it's at the following council meeting or whatever, but to make a referral through an alderperson and then it just goes away, I don't think is what we should be doing. A lot of times, too, when we have citizens that come to an alderperson and think they, you know, might have a good idea, the alderperson brings it to council as a referral, then it gets forgotten sometimes, and I'd like to see a way that that doesn't get forgotten, that it gets handled, processed, thrown out if it's, you know, certainly unfeasible, but at least a way to document that the referral was made and some progress being made upon it.
Thank you. Alder Person Zerflu, you're next.
This might be more for the council as a whole, or maybe Attorney Schill, but, so tonight, after I read the report, made the motion to pass, approved the report, which was received a second, we withheld two items. I certainly didn't have an objection to it, because I think if an alderperson wants to withhold anything out of report, they should be able to do so. And I was fine with that, but then, just later on, when it came to the issue of a motion being made to approve two other items, now we asked for official consent, you know, unanimous consent, and, you know, question about these, you know, secondary motions to amend a motion. I guess I just want us on the same page, because every once in a while, it's like we do things just a little different, and I know I've been on the receiving end of not getting something withheld that I've wanted, and I'm not complaining, I just would like us to, I don't know if there's something we can do, come up, maybe every new council even just come up with a system, like this is what's going to be acceptable and this is what's not, and just so we all know, it just seems we all kind of are on different pages sometimes.
Thanks for seeking clarification on that. I think it'd be beneficial, and I think even to Alder Person Furkey's comment, there's been some internal communication with department heads related to the incoming council and the next reorganizational meeting and meetings after, to re, kind of set the table for folks, so everyone's understood on various parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, but even, just even the referral process and how things get referred to committees. I think there's some great opportunity for us to kind of re-educate ourselves, even myself included, on the, kind of the methods and the role and the rules of the body. So I think, I look forward to that, especially the two that are in the audience that are going to be coming on council, just so everyone's aware of what's, what's going on, for everyone's benefit. So I don't think you need to respond to that directly now. I think that can come at a, at a later time, unless you, unless you see the need. Okay. Alder Person Rayom, you're next.
I have one referral for our, actually, my committee. And it's going to be on the agenda, so it's a, it's a, Second Avenue, Joe, the alley in back of that, and I think the person talked to you at some point in time, I'm not sure, so, where the, off the alley that...
About paving?
The paving and the slope then goes down by the garage and that, that it's lower than the paving is.
Sure. So for the referral, do you want it specific to that alley? There are a number of alleys that we need to address.
It's the first, it's the first, well, the alley, as you, I'm not sure the address.
West of Second Street, north of Park, between Park and the expressway?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be in contact with it tomorrow and make sure we got it all right.
Are there any further requests to speak? See no further requests to speak. Moving on to item number 16, which reads, consideration of changing the regular April common council meeting date. Part two of that is confirmation of the reorganizational meeting in April. Third item is the possibility of urgent time-sensitive new business taking up, taken up, which potentially could be the Clean Water Fund Loan Finance Agreement at the reorganizational meeting in April, and item for a, and a possible special meeting because of urgent time-sensitive new business Clean Water Fund Loan Finance Agreement to be held on or before May 1st. This comes as a result of clarifying last year, for those of you that remember, the challenge related to the taking over of the new council and the disposing of business by the old council. I believe it was Alder Person Stack at the time who was not going to be on the council technically with the reorganizational meeting, so there was a desire to change our process, and I believe the council concurred that that was the case. So Attorney Schill, if you'd like to speak to a little bit of the background further on that, so everyone's aware of what...
Right. I guess the first thing that you, I mean, does anyone need clarification on exactly what had happened in previous years and why, it, I guess I can go into it a little bit. In previous years, or I should say, before last year, the council always had a meeting, one meeting, or actually, we had two meetings, but it was on the same day, on the third Tuesday of April, and that was the last meeting of the old council. And then there was also a reorganizational meeting, which was the new council, and we found out that that would not be appropriate, because the new council is effective on 12:01 AM that third Tuesday in April, so the old council then really does not have any authority to meet on the third Tuesday in April and have, and, so what was suggested by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities is if you, so the question really is, you've had, or you will have, committee meetings, probably the first week in April, maybe the second week in April, and then do you want those committees and their referrals and their actions to go to one more meeting of your old council, which would have to be, take place before April 17th, or do you want that to all go to the new council on April 17th, which was, could be two more members, possibly, possibly three? So that's kind of the first question to ask. Last year, when this happened, it seemed like you had expressed a preference to allow the old council dispose of those matters, and then basically have two meetings in April, one before April 17th, and then one on April 17th. And then on April 17th, it's just simply the reorganization of the new council. However, a caveat to that is we do have some urgent time-sensitive business that can't... However, a caveat to that is we do have some urgent time-sensitive business that can't take place before April 17th but has to take place by May 1st, which is the clean, clean water fund loan application and financing agreement. So then the question is, not further question is whether you would want to entertain that action at a reorganizational meeting on the 17th or have a, and, or have a special meeting between then and May 1st. So I guess to take it first would be the actions of the committee meetings, the first week in April. Do you want to have a, a meeting of your old council to dispose of those before April 17th? And I...
Alder Person Rayom, you're first.
Yeah, and I, I know how it's written in the book, I think, but I don't have with me, but, you know, goes through my mind and the term of office is 12 months. Correct. But, but it, but the date, the date goes April to April, which, you know, kind of strays goes like three, 13 months. If you'd follow what I'm trying to get to, that April should be the start of the new council where, if, if we'd get to it, the March one would be the last meeting, the, the old council.
Well, but, but we can't change the state law, which says that the new council has to be seated the third Tuesday in April, so we can't, I mean, unless you're saying the last, the old council wraps up in March, then we don't have any committee meetings in April, have a reorganizational on the 17th, and then, and then basically no business would get done in April, and then you'd wait till May. But, I mean, we, the, the, the terms are set by state law, we can't change those.
I'm not, I'm not saying to do it, it's just that I think that really there's an overlap of a, of a month there that, from 12 months, it's like 13 months really, but...
So for further clarification in terms of, of this, I think the, I understand the committees are planning to meet the first Tuesday of April. Is that correct? The third? That all three committees would meet on the, you're meeting, you're meeting the second Monday, the ninth? Okay. All right. I did catch that in the minutes earlier. Sorry. Okay. So then in that case, the soonest a meeting could, could occur based on noticing that special April, changing the regular common council meeting would have to be, soon as it would be the 11th to notice 24 hours, the actions of that ninth, meeting on the ninth. So Wednesday, the 11th, or Thursday, the 12th, or 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th would be the day of the reorganizational meeting. So Alder Person Kubasak, I see you want to speak, so I'm going to go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think with this, and I think the reason why we're talking about it is because I questioned it initially, and, and it seems like we're trying to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. I, I'm so glad that Sue presented her email to you guys, because I'm looking at it, and it was a case where Alder Person Rayom had requested that we dispense of the business, and, but then the second to last paragraph, it, it continues, fast forward this week with the plan to put in practice Claire's recommendation as well as the request of Tom Rayom, and have two meetings. I don't know if I'm reading in this that Alder Person Rayom requested to have two meetings when he made the request. I think what he was interpreting, or what I'm interpreting, what he was thinking, I don't know what he was thinking, because I didn't ask him, is that we would just have a lame duck session of, of council every election year. And, and I think he, he kind of spoke to that in terms of March would be the last council meeting of the current council. It, it's a case where the business at the committees, regardless of who is not on the, the board anymore, who is, if the new council doesn't want to take that up or, or doesn't want to vote for it, then that's the pleasure of that council at the April meeting. Unfortunately, it's a case where now we have a month-long lame duck session, whereas in the past, when we had two council meetings a month, then it was kind of a shorter period of time and maybe the committee meetings weren't scheduled in that, that short two-week time period. But with this, it, it just, especially with the ability to have a special meeting, we can call a special meeting. If there's time-sensitive stuff, let's call a special meeting. If we have to pass a, a, whatever it is, an appropriations bill for, or, for a clean water fund, that's fine. Let's call a special meeting, have it in the first floor conference room, take five minutes to do it, and, and move on with it. I don't understand setting a precedent, creating two meetings in April just for, to originally dispense of, of, of the business of the old council. I, I don't get it. Thank you.
Alder Person Dolan, you're next.
Well, I'm not going to say for once, but I do agree, agree with that on this. I don't see the need to have a special meeting. Got a guy that's running in my place that's going to take this seat. I got confidence he'll vote the way he wants, and he'll read the material, know what's going on. If we want a special meeting for the, the water issue, I would say we do that before the finance meeting.
Are there any further requests to speak? Joe Terry, who's got a, a comment?
The clean water fund activity wouldn't be ready for the finance committee meeting, so that would require some special action. And, you know, whatever the, whatever the will of the council, I, I would hope that we would not have, you know, whether, whether the new council reviews old, you know, the, the previous council's committee business, or there's a special meeting, there are a lot of activities that are important activities that the city needs to conduct, you know, on a, on a monthly basis. And sometimes, you know, whether it's, you know, whether it's bills being paid, you know, different requests, contract-type things, permissions to solicit for RFPs, all those types of activities, you know, can be difficult to schedule as it is, and, and having a month early in the year where we wouldn't be able to get approval to do some of those things would be, I think, disadvantage, disadvantage to the city. Thanks.
Alder Person Furkey, you're next.
So when I was elected four years ago, and we had split council meetings, the outgoing and the incoming, I sat where those two are, and I seen action taken place by the outgoing council that severely affected the city's budget with some health insurance proposals that were passed by people walking out the door. I didn't like that, because I had to live with it. And being on the Human Resources Committee, had to live with it for four years and continue to do so. My rather is when we have our meetings in early April, let us take ownership of our meetings. The action that's taken at our meetings, whether we approve of something or, or disapprove of something, we're the ones vetting it. We have at least two gentlemen coming in that are going to be kind of flat-footed because they don't, they don't know the background on a lot of stuff. And without having access to, unless they want to go back through a lot of city meetings in minutes, they're going to be certainly flat-footed. So my wish is, is that we take ownership of our April meetings as this council, and whether that's held on the 10th or the 16th, I don't care. Doesn't matter to me. But I, I don't agree with two new people voting on stuff that was debated when they might not even been at the meeting. So that's my thoughts.
Alder Person Furkey, you're not, you just spoke. Are there further requests to speak? The motion, I mean, there, the floor is open if there wishes to be any discussion or any, any action or a vote on anything that's been discussed. There's been a lot discussed. Okay. So seeing no motion to the effect, I guess we'll move into adjournment. Does I understand? Is that correct? We don't have to, we don't have to take action to, to set the reorg meeting. Is that, am I understanding that? At this point, the, as I understand, maybe just to clarify for everyone else, in case anyone else is confused, the meeting, the committee meetings would occur as they would in April, as they currently are scheduled. The new council then would take up the action of the committee meetings that were acted upon by those that are potentially not being on the council after the 17th, or on the 17th, of course. So that's at least the, the standard. So I think Alder Person Dolan had a right in sense that he's going to take action on something that he's not going to vote on later that month, because the committee meeting then in fact would be his last, his last meeting. So is that understood by everybody? That's a preference of everybody? Okay. Will that item be ready, Joe, for the reorg meeting, the clean water fund loan?
I believe it will, yes.
Okay. So the concern related to that clean water fund loan item is that it will not be ready for a committee. It will be ready for the council, and then, so everyone's okay with us referring that item to the reorg? Yeah. Alder Person Furkey, the floor is yours.
So I'll, I'll make a motion, and you guys can shoot it down if you want, that we meet two days after the finance committee meeting on the 11th.
I have a motion...
As of full council.
To change the regular April common council meeting, so this would not be the reorg one, to April 11th. By Alder Person Furkey, is there a second? Second by Kellogg? No, it's the regularly scheduled April meeting. So the motion is to move the regularly scheduled April meeting off the third Tuesday and move the regularly scheduled to the 11th, to dispose of the business of the committees up until that period of time. Alder Person Zerflu, you've got a request to speak.
I just want to make sure everyone knows the, because of the new council coming in and stuff, we had to kind of adjust the Finance Property Committee meeting. It is on a Monday next month, not a Tuesday, because there was concerns over getting everything done in time for the council, basically. So, for Paul there.
All right. See no further requests to speak. There's a motion on the floor.
So the motion carried to hold the regularly scheduled common council meeting in April for this body on the 11th.
On Wednesday, the 11th. Is that correct? At 6:00 PM, I would assume? Okay. All right. Floor is still open for motion. If there's any other, I don't think anything else needs to be acted upon. I guess the confirmation of the reorg, that's, I guess that's up to, yeah, I mean, do you want to hold a reorganizational meeting in April? I guess that's the other question? Because by ordinance, it does not state that that meets on the third Tuesday. Is that correct? By state law, it says on 12:01 on the 17th, they, the new council takes over, but there is not a... I would, I would, I would hope so. So Alder Person Zerflu, did you want to...
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I think we should have a regular third Tuesday meeting.
Okay. So that's in the ordinance? Okay, great. So we've got that covered. Okay. All right. I don't think there's any other action, since we clarified the clean water fund loan item there. Item 17 is adjournment. I entertain a motion. I have a motion by Zerflu. Is there a second? Second by Furkey. All in favor of adjournment? Any opposed? Stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here, and have a good, rest your evening.